All right, let's call the St. Louis Park School Board meeting for February 25th to order. Our first, we're gonna have a spotlight. It's the 2019 School Board Recognition Week. And then I'll, should we do that and then we'll do the agenda?
Sure.
Okay.
All right. Good evening Chair Gores and members of the board. I would just like to take this opportunity in recognition of School Board Leadership Recognition Week, which was last week, to just thank each of you for your dedication and service to the St. Louis Park Public School District. So on behalf of the students, staff, families, and community members, I would just like to read the inscription on the certificates that we've made for each of you this evening. "St. Louis Park Public Schools appreciates the vital role school board members play to establish policies to ensure an efficient, effective school system, serve as advocates for public education and community, and communicate the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district." And I've shared with you all before that people don't truly understand the significant role that you all play from a policy and governance standpoint. And, you know, as people tune into the meetings and just watch you sit there behind the dais, they don't recognize all of the difficult decisions and conversations and challenging work that you do on a daily basis. And I would suggest that the level of compensation that you're paid doesn't necessarily match the overall work that you do for our community. So just wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge each of you and thank you. I won't have you come up and individually get your certificates, but I'll bring them to you. But with the deepest amount of sincerity and appreciation, we want to thank you for your leadership because St. Louis Park Public Schools wouldn't be the great place that it is today if it weren't for the leadership of each of you and for our staff and students. So thank you.
Thank you, Ashton, and thank you. Really, I think I can speak for everyone, but it's a pleasure to serve this community that cares so much about education, and it's a real pleasure to serve our students because people ask, "Why are you doing this?" And in one way or another, I've heard every member in the board say, "I'm doing it because I believe in public education, I believe in our students, I believe in the future of each student and of this country, and public education's critical to that." So we're really happy and privileged, I think, and proud to play our part. So thank you for appreciating us. So now we're gonna look at the agenda, and we've called it to order. That's been done. Next is the approval of the agenda, then open forum, the superintendent's report. Discussion items, they include the Curriculum Leaders Update, Middle School Media Center Mechanical Upgrade Project Bid Awards, Strategic Plan Report, Strategy for Start Times, Instructional Time, Policy Development Second Reading Policies 5-5-0, Distribution of Announcements and Other Information, 705 Investments, 707 Transportation of Public School Students. We will then have the Consent Agenda, and then the Action Agenda has approval of Middle School Media Center Mechanical Upgrade Project Bid Awards and approval of Policies Second Readings Policies 5-5-0, Distribution of Announcements and Other Information, 705 Investments, 707 Transportation of Public School Students, followed by Communications and Transmittals, followed by Adjournment. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
No.
Moved by Karen. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mary. All in favor?
Aye.
Karen's 7-0. First up, we have open forum. Is there anybody here who would like to speak to the board during open forum? I see nobody raising their hand, so we'll move right along to the rest of the agenda. First up, Superintendent's Report.
All right. So Chair Gores, items, first and foremost, I would like to acknowledge Steve Schmitz as the 2019 Minnesota Teacher of the Year semifinalist. This auditorium conducting a, we're extremely proud even his leadership. As you all, 169 candidates, which I believe was the largest, one of the largest number in recent history, and now is one of 40 semifinalists. So regardless of what hap, ultimately, you know, we would love for Steve to be named as the Minnesota Teacher of the Year, become a finalist, but regardless of what hap, and the leadership and just the support that he provides to our students every single day, I think I'm so proud to work here because I think we can substitute any of our teachers in for Steve, and they deserve that level of recognition. So if you see Steve, please, you know, give him a huge congratulations and a high five because it's well deserved. The next item that I would like to connect for my superintendent's report is the Start Time Options for Feedback. So this Thursday, February 28th, from 7:00 to 8:30, we will be hosting a Twitter Town Hall, and if you're interested in participating, please use the hashtag #SLPStartTime, and we'll certainly respond via Twitter and hopefully just engage in a conversation about our start time options and be able to respond to any questions that you have. I also wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that we've extended timeline for thought exchange till Wednesday at the end of the day. And I specifically said, "Well, what does that mean?" And I was told 12:00 a.m., well, really, that's 12:00 a.m. Thursday, but end of the day on Wednesday, we'll have, thought exchange will be available for you to provide additional feedback about our current start time options. And then lastly, this weekend, I had the opportunity to see exceptional performance from our students in the PSI Drama Club, Los Tres Cerditos, which translates to the Three Pigs. And I continue to be amazed and I'm thankful for just our community and the attention to the arts. Over the past month, I've had the opportunity to see multiple elementary performances, and it really gets me excited about the future here in St. Louis Park with the Middle School Performing Arts Center and just the opportunities that will continue to provide for our students to find multiple pathways to excellence. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Can I just ask, the thought exchange, is that on the district webpage if people are, what does that mean for people?
Yeah, so Thought Exchange is an online forum for community members, staff, students, parents, guardians to provide feedback, anonymous feedback, or about the start time options. Anybody can access that through our district website. If they go to our Start Times link on the homepage, you'll be able to be directed to Thought Exchange. And it's just a great way for you to provide the project team feedback without necessarily having to interact with them.
Thank you. So moving on, unless there are any other clarifying questions? First discussion item, Curriculum Leaders Update, and I'm looking out at some of our amazing teachers and can't wait to hear what they have to tell us. And a few principals, too.
Good evening Superintendent Dosai, Chair Gores, and members of the board. I want to just say, I'm really excited to have these teacher leaders here tonight to present to us about the frameworks of IB and immersion. One of the things that I've seen as long as I've been here over the past few months is that not only do we have incredible teachers that are helping support all of the work that we have throughout the district, but they are helping usher in a framework that ensures that all of our children in each of our schools is getting a rigorous curriculum and that that framework guides all of our students from kindergarten through 12th grade. And that's why tonight we have folks that are going to be sharing with you information about both International Baccalaureate Programs and our immersion program that really serve all kids. So I'm gonna turn it over to them.
Thank you. And just for the folks watching at home, you just heard from Dr. Patrick Duffy, who is the Director of Curriculum Instruction here at St. Louis Park, and I'll let each of you introduce yourselves.
Before we get going, we'll just introduce ourselves quickly. I'm Jenny Magdal, the IB Diploma Program Coordinator here at the high school.
I'm Mia Waldera, the Middle Years Program Coordinator at the middle school.
I'm Cara Shaid, I'm the TOSA at Park Spanish Immersion.
Hi, I'm Carrie Ranky-Jones. I am the IB Coordinator at Peir Herbert.
And Olivia Tolzine unfortunately will not be here. She came down ill, but she is the IB Coordinator at Aquila.
And I'm Ila Saxena, and I am the PYP Coordinator at Susan Lindgren Elementary School. Thanks for having us here tonight. We're here to talk to you today about curriculum, the work that's being done to build a cohesive system across our entire district. The focus of our conversation tonight is on Strategy One, Teaching and Learning. On this slide, you can see kind of the three circles in the upper right-hand corner, and that's a reminder to all of us that our curricular frameworks are immersion and IB. And IB includes PYP, which is the Primary Years Program, MYP, which is the Middle Years Program, and DP, the Diploma Program at the high school. We're doing all of that using culturally relevant pedagogy. As you can see on the slide, it says Strategy One tells us that grounded in our belief that all students can achieve our mission, we will continually evaluate and systemically implement student outcomes by aligning instruction, curriculum, and assessment in a culturally relevant manner. Currently, our work this year is to build a very strong core in curriculum and instruction, understanding that as we do so, there's a direct impact on our students. Our belief is that when we strive for cohesion, our students are able to demonstrate academic excellence, awareness of multiple perspectives, and showcase creativity and deep learning. Strategy One provides us the seeds of ideas for ways of being in our school. The district PD offerings this year have rooted us in our work in culturally relevant pedagogy across all sites and programs. Teams of people continue the work, establishing a strong core. Schools carry out the work determined by teams in their own unique ways. In the end, our students bloom. It's now time to hear more about the work that's going on to build the strong core, examples of what is happening at sites, and most importantly, see evidence of transformation.
Okay, so Ila referred to Strategy One, and in order to do this, we rely on a strong core of teaching and learning, which is comprised by TOSA's, teacher leaders, coaches, administration, district office, and the teachers, working in cooperation for unity and alignment to be able to provide an equitable education across the district. This core is dependent upon collaboration and collectivism, and our belief is that together we do better. And so for me personally, that means working with my colleagues that are in the IB schools, and I'm at the immersion school, and really learning the best of what the IB framework has to offer, and for me to offer what, how global mindedness looks in an immersion school, and being able to share those ideas and bring them back to our sites. In education, there's often that the idea of silos or being alone, and the goal of these core teams is to evaluate in the line so that teachers can implement with high degrees of success. Our work is intentional and focused really on human capital and focusing on building that will skill and capacity to be able to do the work.
As Ila and Cara explain how we work together to align the work at a district level, I will explain how this work is developed at sites. The image you see represents the alignment by individual sites to the district-wide mission statement and strategic plan. First, I'll direct your attention to the orange box on the side. Our work aligns the professional development, which includes professional learning communities called PLCs, and professional development plans called PDPs, as well as assessment, curriculum, and instruction. Now I will have you look toward the cogs in the center of the image. Sites are guided by both their curricular and instructional frameworks, such as the International Baccalaureate Program and/or the Language Immersion Program. These frameworks guide how sites instruct the state standards. Another critical component to the decision-making process is our district's commitment to racial equity. Our work in racial equity is the lens in which curricular and instructional decisions are made. Sites are working in aligning curriculum and instruction to culturally relevant practices. Finally, each year, sites participate in the Data Retreat, a collaborative, reflective planning opportunity which allows sites to address the specific needs of the students and community which they serve. Sites then develop a school improvement plan which aligns the district mission statement and the strategic plan to the site's plan.
The middle school is a bridge that connects the International Baccalaureate Framework with immersion best practices as we continue to work to embed culturally relevant pedagogy into our written, taught, and assessed curriculum. The middle school also launches the Diploma Program Candidates and IB Coursework at the high school. After reviewing the trunk in our tree analogy, alignment at the core, we move up to the leaves and the fruit of the tree are evidence of teaching and learning. So I'd like to share a leaf story. One leaf story is from Ms. Gladys Romero. She is a language acquisition instructor who teaches in the middle school immersion program. She's embedding culturally relevant pedagogy into her classroom with a project called Skype Pals. So what you see on the screen is just a peek at the pals in Columbia in a rural school that is doing this project with Ms. Romero. Ms. Romero's working with the educator there at the school to set up learning experiences for both the Colombian classroom and Ms. Romero's. They recently shared with me their collaborative rationale for the Skype Pals project, which includes three reasons. First, learning and practicing a world language in addition to a student's home language has become a necessity and an advantage in people's lives. For this reason, they believe schools have the responsibility to educate students through language interactions with other cultures. Second, learning another world language through student interactions gives students a better understanding of their own world, especially doing so embedded in a respectful academic environment. And finally, the Skype project, according to the two lead teachers, is a way to motivate students to improve their communication skills and strengthen such values as tolerance, empathy, and acceptance. As the IB Coordinator, I see the students developing learner profile attributes of communication, inquiry, and open-mindedness, which are beautiful leaves growing on our tree.
I'd like to focus on leaves as well, but at the high school level, oop, there we go. So at the high school, we have for juniors and seniors either à la carte IB courses that students may take, or they may go for the entire IB diploma. They get to choose again as juniors and seniors. One of the courses or one of the ideas that runs through all of the courses that are IB is this thought of theory of knowledge. And theory of knowledge is an idea of how do we know what we know? And so whether a student's taking IB psychology or IB chemistry, those ideas of how do we know things within this topic show up regularly, and students are asked to think about how do we know any of this? Not only do those ideas show up in all of the courses, there is also a specific course called Theory of Knowledge that students may take the second semester of their junior year and the first semester of their senior year. That's an option for students that are taking IB as à la carte. It's open to anybody in the high school, but if you're a diploma candidate, you have to take the course, and it's a fun way to get a lot of different perspectives from around the school. What this really leads to is a high level of inquiry, a depth of knowledge, and critical thinking to be able to get different perspectives. And we're gonna hear just a little bit from two students who have been in our district for a really long time, the whole career. They started out at PSI, and they're gonna talk a little bit about what that continuum has meant for them.
Hi, I'm Ilsa.
And I'm Erica, and we're both senior IB diploma candidates.
And we both went to PSI, so that means we're both gonna get the IB bilingual diploma at the end of the year.
Yeah, and our PSI education has really helped us understand how like the international aspect of IB and how that ties into our Theory of Knowledge education in our IB classes at the high school.
Yeah, we have a different kind of perspective and a lot of like outside knowledge which has really benefited us through the program.
It's me again. I'm actually gonna be sharing what Olivia wanted to share from Aquila. In the IB PYP, we measure if we have had a successful unit of inquiry through our students' actions. We can do the same for our SLP educators. In order to determine if our professional learning goals, including Strategy One, are being met, we need to look at our staff's actions and the impact it has on our students. Through our district-wide work, staff has learned that there are three components of culturally relevant teaching. They include academic success, cultural competency, and critical consciousness. Our teachers are continuing to build their will, skill, capacity, and knowledge in understanding the importance of uncovering missing narratives and perspectives. They are able to take this back to the school level and teach students how to do this. So we're gonna look at an example here of some of our second graders who recently read a grade-level article about Senator Kamala Harris and her run for presidency. In the article, Ms. Harris states that she was inspired by Shirley Chisholm. Students and staff inquired into Mrs. Chisholm and learned that she was an African-American woman who ran for president. This was a missing narrative from the teacher's life, and the students and teachers wanted to learn more. As they were learning, the students came across this poem, and two students are reading this to you.
... knew a message should be... ... this wasn't just white men who could run for presidency. Civil rights had been denied for many painful years, and now all citizens could vote after laws that calm their fears. Shirley Chisholm would bring change for the world, was different than, and a woman was often judged by the color of her skin. Shirley Chisholm was the first, but she would not be the last. She sent a message far and wide that times were changing fast. Although she didn't win, her quest and dreamers were free. One day, the president would look like you or me.
So as we come here to a close, we hope that you can see the thoughtfulness. Oh, sorry, I started her up again. So sorry. Hmm, just trying to advance to the next slide. Don't know if it's happening. Thank you very much. So as we come to a close, we hope you can see that we have some thoughtfulness here, some intentionality, and the beginnings of our transformation. Collaboration and collectivism is our theme for the benefit of our students. We believe that we are stronger together and therefore striving for cohesion in our work in teaching and learning. Tonight, we have only shared a few examples of how our students are blooming. We look forward to sharing many more. Thank you for your time this evening. If you have any questions, we will be happy to answer them.
I'm not seeing any questions by anybody. Excellent presentation, and I love the specific examples that kind of put flesh on the educational concepts for us and for the people at home.
It's not a question, but it's a praise. When you were, the very beginning, when you mentioned the, when you read the part of the strategic plan, and I was on that strategic plan committee, and it's been five years since we first started. And I remember that conversation that we had about that particular wording, and it took a long time to get it, and it is unbelievably amazing to watch this come to fruition. And you mentioned it's kind of a beginning, but it's also, it's not really. I mean, I know that you guys have been working together and working to make this happen, and this is just, this alignment has not just sort of happened overnight, it's been happening for a while, and I'm really grateful to all of you for that. So thank you for coming and showing us this amazing, amazing work we're doing.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it. All right, next up, we're gonna talk about the Middle School Media Center and Mechanical Upgrade Project Bid Awards.
Chair Gores, Superintendent Dosai, and members of the school board, I want to share with you that we did get our bids back now for, I think this says high school, but I think it's, is it middle school? It's middle school. So, wrong slide, but I want to kind of share with you that we do have the middle school bids, and they did come in, so I'm sorry, confusion on this part of it. Should I just, okay. So in front of you with packets that you have is that it's, you'll get the, you'll see, we have the bid award letter from Cunningham Architects, the bid award letter from Kraus Anderson, the bid tabulations, the Minnehaha Water Creek Permit. The reason why we, I share that with you is because of the fact that in order to get a lot of these projects started, we have to have very agencies take a look at what we are going to be doing. And Minnehaha is very, very engaged on what the school district is doing for just the site works and things of the nature of what plantings we're gonna be putting and things like that, just because of the fact that that's their involvement throughout all projects throughout the state of Minnesota. And then you're gonna see the energy cost calculations. We did calculations on this project as well as the other projects, and we're going with what's called Bundle 2, and you'll see that in your packet. And Bundle 2 will help us save quite a bit of energy in the long run. I just quickly will go over with you. We will be saving approximately $305,000 with the new additions that we'll be doing at the middle school, and about a payback of 6.2 years after that, then whatever we save is gonna be the benefit of the district itself. And then finally, I wanted to kind of share with you a letter from the Labor Management and Materials, because we're, we put ourselves in a pretty good position on the high school project that you see there, and the middle school project that we're asking for is that we went and asked the architects and the engineers to give us the packet for the mechanical systems for all the projects, because what we're seeing is that we're seeing a spike and increase in materials on certain products that are out there. And by doing this now, even though it costs us a little bit more upfront right now, it's not, we're gonna be saving, especially on this project, probably about $1.3 million by awarding it tonight, instead of going out two years from now when we were going to go out for the Performing Arts Edition and things like that. So I wanted to kind of share that with you, is that we're trying to be as proactive and fiscally responsible on everything that we do here. And this letter's kind of telling you that anything that's gonna be awarded after February 28th could see a 10% to 15% increase in certain materials because of things that are going on throughout the world. So we put ourselves in a pretty good position, and talking with my colleagues, they're gonna be struggling, they said, on what they're gonna be doing in the future, because a lot of the projects won't be going out for a while, and our projects are completed and ready to go out, so. So what I'm asking tonight is a bid award of the Middle School Media Center, and the bids came in at 8.827 million. We have budgets for 8.852 million, so we're right there, but we want to make sure that you understand that some of the things that we're gonna be doing moving forward. So any questions on that? So any questions on that?
I have a question about the bids that were awarded or that we're gonna be voting on tonight. Last time we were here, you had a mixture on minority or women-owned or groups that bid in your mind. Do you have those type of measures?
Yep, I do have that, and I'm sorry I didn't bring that up, because we're proud to share with you that our small business enterprise, minority business enterprise, and women business enterprise, we have a, we have a 15% participation. Again, that's based off of so many contractors and vendors. So it averaged out to be about six or seven companies that we'll be working with that meet that category. So we're very, very proud and happy about that, just because of the fact that we understand that need to have that. Also, we're about 72% union in this project and 28% non-union. Non-union doesn't mean, again, that, you know, we're for or against union or, or non-union. It's just that some companies aren't unionized, and that would be like flooring finishes and things like that that are not union companies, but that's who bid on the projects. So we're very proud of what we have and what we're, how we're moving forward in all these projects that we're doing. So 50% participation.
And if I remember correctly, was it like 7% or 5% is national average or state average?
Usually when the county goes out, theirs is about 10%. Yep, and so we're way ahead of a lot of organizations, and we're proud of that. We push hard. Kraus Anderson pushes hard to try to get, again, small business, minority, and women businesses to bid on projects.
So Tom, this is, we're being asked to approve the bids for the media center, and when do you anticipate the construction of that?
We would like to start the construction in May. Even though school's still on, it won't impact school curriculum or any type of, uh, school activities, because this is an addition to the media center. Once school closes on June 12th, then we'll be going inside the building and starting construction. And that project, the media center, along with the seven brand-new classrooms, that's what this is all about, is we're building seven new classrooms and a link. That will go until January 3rd of 2020. So we do have a plan in place for next fall, when the kids come back. As a, we're gonna have a smaller-sized media center at the middle school, and we're gonna be looking at how we could put barriers up again so that we don't interrupt any school services and things like that. So we have a pretty good plan laid out.
So the smaller media center is what they'll use while you're building the larger media center?
Correct. And then after the winter break, when they come back, they're gonna come to a brand-new media center plus seven new classrooms, which we're excited about.
And just refresh me, have we approved the bids for the classrooms yet, or is this included?
This is part of it.
This is part of it, okay.
This is part of it. That's the addition is, that's why, that's why it's at 8 million, because it's gonna be an addition on the second floor with seven new classrooms, a link to it, the media center, and then of course, mechanical and electrical systems.
And one thing that this particular project really will help is the traffic flow at the middle school, because right now, it is impossible to do a loop on the second floor.
Correct.
You have to go down different staircases and go through the main level to get up to the other side of the building. And so what you've done is taken a horrible mess, and I've walked it multiple times for parent information night. It's gonna be so smooth and seamless, so.
It will be.
Uh, it's gonna be awesome and worth the time and effort, so thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Yes, the link would be, it's gonna be fantastic, and it's gonna be all bright and clear, glass, so kids will, you know, see the outside nature and everything else.
Thanks, Tom. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. I see your team is with you, so. So next, next up, we have the Strategic Plan Report, Strategy 4 Start Times, and we'll hear from Superintendent PSI.
Good evening, Chair Gores, members of the board. This evening, I'm filling in for Director of Communications and Community Relations, Sarah Thompson, and we'll be sharing a, just a brief, brief update or overview regarding our start-in-time process. And specifically, I would like to provide a brief budget overview. And this evening, we have Rich Inga from K-12 Transportation, who will help by sharing just some transportation overview as well, connected to the presentation. So from a budgetary standpoint, I think it's best to start off at a very high level as we just look at our overall budget. And as you, as you, as you take a look at our overall budget, you see the different pots of money. Specifically, 72% of our budget being connected to our general fund, 3% connected to our technology levy, 12% connected to debt services, 8% connected to community education, 2% connected to school nutrition, and then 3% connected to capital and long-term facilities maintenance. We combined both of those pots for the purpose of this presentation. So as I, as we click through the next couple of slides, I think it's really important to note that as it relates to transportation, really what we're talking about is that general fund budget capacity there, that 72%. So as we, as we dig down a little bit deeper and we take a closer look at the general fund, what you'll notice is that, just like any school district across this country, a large percentage, in our, in our specific case, 85% of that budget from a general fund standpoint is used to pay for our salaries and benefits, right? The humans that come to work every single day to positively impact the lives of our students. And then a couple of smaller budgets connected to our general fund are the budget at 3% that we use for supplies, equipment, other purchase services at 7%, and then our transportation budget at 5%, which all including, and I'll talk about that here shortly, is close to $3 million. So as we drill down and we look at our transportation budget, you know, I think the best way to frame this is as, currently, right, we're spending 33% of our transportation budget, which totals $980,000 on what we would consider contracted regular-ed transportation, where we're currently allocating 37% of that budget to contracted special education transportation, and 21% to contracted DSAG transportation budget capacity. And what I should say, what I want to say there is that, from a contracted desegregation transportation standpoint, those dollars, that $635,000 is refunded by the state. So it's not a situation in which we could reduce that contracted desegregation to create more budget capacity for our contracted regular ed, because essentially, if we don't use it, we don't get, we don't get those dollars from the state. As it relates to special education, as you all are, you know, fully aware, there certainly is a cross-subsidy in which I know you all saw the most recent budget forecast from the budget proposal from the governor, which is right now designed to keep the cross-subsidy flat. So I don't necessarily anticipate any additional resources from the federal government or state government around special education, special education transportation. So as we essentially move forward, you know, and if we were to go back to the overall general fund budget, in order to increase budget capacity for transportation, we would, you know, essentially have to look at one of these other areas to increase that 5%, right? Either us looking to take it from salaries and benefits, supplies, equipment, or other purchase services. Before I have Rich come up just to share a little bit about a, from a transportation overview standpoint, I think is, as we think about adding buses, I think the best way to look at it is that it would be about $50,000 per bus to add a bus as we move forward through this start-in-time process. So at this time, I'm gonna have Rich Inga from K-12 Transportation come up, and he's just gonna give us a brief overview over our current transportation scenarios, and then just talk a little bit about potential options as we move forward.
Thank you, Austin. Chairman Gores and the board, just gonna give you a quick overview here of the transportation setup and scenario for St. Louis Park. I know we've had a few meetings with the public and some stakeholders on this, so just kind of want to go over a couple things. A lot of times, people talk to me, and I start talking transportation, and they're really not sure what I'm talking about. So we're just gonna go into some definitions here on some stuff we'll talk about today. So just a definition here, a tier we'll talk about today. And basically, that's a vehicle picking up a group of students. So you could think of a tier as picking up a school and dropping off at that school, picking up the students. A route is a combination of tiers.
Can you move a little closer to the mic so that you get picked up? Thank you.
I'm sorry. So a tier is basically a group of students that get picked up, and then you drop them off at the school. It's kind of one little segment of a route. A route is kind of a combination of tiers put together. So you have an AM route and a PM route, so it's a group of tiers that are together. Again, a bus, which consists of both the AM route and the PM route, again, is about, on average, about 50,000 per bus. Just kind of looking at our current structure for St. Louis Park here. First tier that we have in the morning is our middle school tier. We have 18 buses that we use. Our average tier length is 29 minutes. And then our longest ride is for in-district students, there's about 38 minutes. The length of day also is about 6 hours and 42 minutes that the junior high has, okay? Our second tier that we use currently is our high school PSI routes. We utilize 24 buses. Our average tier length is about 28 minutes for the high school, 33 minutes for PSI. We run the longest bus ride in the, for the high school is about 40 minutes. For PSI is about 45 minutes. And basically, currently PSI and the high school students ride together. And our third tier is the other elementary tier, and that's Aquila. Peter Hobart and Susan Lindgren. We utilize 19 buses there. Average tier length is 23 minutes. And then our longest ride for the elementary is in-district is about 34 minutes. There's a couple different options out there for different scenarios that the district can entertain, and there's really a cost value for that. We have a tier-one option, which we would require about 61 buses at a cost of $2.6 million for transportation. Tier-two, a two-tier system, so basically the buses would go out, come back, and drop at the school, go back out, pick up another group of students, come back to the school and drop off. We need to utilize about 36 buses, and that's about $1.3 million. And these figures are just to-from regular ed costs. The option that, option, the three-tier option that we currently utilize is, utilizes 27 buses, and it's at a cost of $981,000. And then the fourth tier, as you notice, one tier is high, two tiers are lower, three tiers are even lower. Now, the fourth tier, we start going back up in price. So the fourth, the fourth tier, basically, we're running four separate segments of the school, which lengthens our, the transportation operation time, and that costs, has a cost to it. So our current contract that we have with Park Adams and any other contract, if we go out for bid, would, we'd see this cost again because of the added time. The costs start going up after that three-tier section, okay?
So are there any questions that you have for us at this time as it relates to any of the information that we shared regarding the overall general budget or just some of the transportation overview?
For an option that would be a one-tier option that would require approximately 61 buses, could we, could you answer whether that would even, whether that would be feasible for Park Adams to be able to fulfill that need with their current load of vehicles and their, the employment of drivers?
Excuse me. Currently, there'd be major difficulties in finding the driver pool to be able to facilitate the 61 additional buses. Or, I'm sorry, the additional drivers that it would take to do that. The equipment wouldn't be a problem, but right now, the driver pool is so sparse that it would be difficult for any company to be able to get that number of drivers.
I just have two questions that I, I think I understand, but I want to make sure that anybody who's looking at this understands them too. One is, when we are talking about the longest bus ride time that's on that chart, we're talking about, that's in-district routes.
Yes, that's correct. That's, that's in-district routes. It does not include our, what we call choice transportation or integration.
And then the second one is for, in the costs, that is, that is the cost, not above and beyond what we're currently paying?
No, you're correct. That is the cost, and that's just the regular ed to-from transportation. Doesn't include integration or special ed. Thank you.
And then, Aston, just before we leave this, can I just talk a little bit about, about what we're projecting for the next presentations? I think, I think we anticipate March 11th that this will be on our agenda again, and we'll get a, some more detailed thoughts with times attached for options?
Thank you, Chair Gores. So as you've stated, on March 11th, we would provide the school board at the March 11th public meeting a recommendation or recommendations that include times, costs, and all of the specific details to allow the board to engage in further discussion. After that March 11th meeting, we have a board work session, I'm sorry, a board listening session scheduled for March 18th, in which the public will have an opportunity to provide the board specific feedback. I am also in the process of looking for another date to have a public meeting. And we would, you know, we've gotten positive feedback from the community about the format of Facebook Live, so we would look at hosting another Facebook Live meeting. We don't have a specific date for that meeting scheduled yet, but we will, we hope to, before the end of this week, get information out to the community about an additional public meeting, based on the feedback that we've been getting, to allow the community to provide additional feedback regarding the recommendations that we ultimately make to the board. And as a staff, we will, we'll make a request that the school board take action on March 25th regarding the start time recommendations. And we recognize that while we're making that request, that it may be challenging for the board to do that, and we can discuss that when we get there. So that's kind of the timeline as it currently exists. Then certainly, we would be open to considering what additional opportunities we'd need, any additional opportunities we need to create for the public.
Thank you, Aston. Anybody else want to comment?
I mean, I just want to note that we did have a pre-meeting tonight, and that's part of the reason why we were late, is that we were peppering Rich with all sorts of questions, and we're already all getting feedback. We're totally engaged in this process. It's gonna be really complex, and Aston has kind of laid out some of the additional times and means by which we can receive additional feedback. We're welcome to receive... We're welcome to receive, we're welcoming respectful feedback about the process and the start times. Yeah, so I just wanted to note that we're all in on this.
Thank you, thank you. So, next up, on the agenda is instructional time, which has a lot to do with our winter that seemed to all come in February this year.
Absolutely. Chair Gores, members of the board, Chair Gores, you're exactly correct. If I would have known that Minnesota's weather pattern was changing to just winter in the month of February, you know, we could have planned accordingly. But what I would like to do for the next few minutes is just talk a little bit about some of the implications of all of the late starts, early dismissals, and school cancellations that we've had over the past couple of months as it relates to us being able to meet the expectations from the state around instructional time. So, just, there is a minimum number of instructional hours that the state requires that each school district in the state of Minnesota completes. For elementary, so full-day elementary, and we only have, we have full-day elementary here, it's 850 hours. For grades 1 through 6, it's 935 hours. And for grades 7 through 12, it's 1,020 hours. So, you know, just kind of what makes an instructional day? So, as we think about an instructional day as it relates to the statute, you know, an instructional day is a day in which all students in the school and grade are required to attend and participate in instructional activities at the same time. Schools, we report the average length of the instructional day in terms of minutes for each grade, and the length of the school day includes supervised recess for elementary and passing time for secondary schools. What it doesn't include, and I got this feedback the other night at the public meeting, it unfortunately doesn't include our bus rides. But I, as I hear, as I've heard from some of our parents, you know, because of the, you know, and as Rich just said, we have some pretty lengthy bus rides. And I know that many parents and community members believe that that is part of the school day. From a legislature standpoint, that's not part of the school day. And then, the length of the school day, and I just kind of mentioned the transportation, but it also excludes meals and any other time in which students are, you know, are in school and are required to, you know, for example, a good example here would be like the zero-hour course. And I know here at the high school, we have zero-hour, but that's not part of the actual scheduled school days in which all students are required to be there. Therefore, it does not count statute-wise as part of the instructional day. So, what does this mean for us here in St. Louis Park Public Schools? I know many of our neighboring school districts and many colleagues have had conversation. And actually, this Friday, at our Association of Metropolitan School District meeting, as part of our agenda, we'll be looking at e-learning. And we'll have several school districts talking about that just because of the weather and implications around instructional hours. But as it currently relates to St. Louis Park, you see the state requirements in the second column to the left, and then the minimum number of days. And then, you see the number of days that we had scheduled into our calendar at the start of the school year. So, what you'll notice is, in the categories in which we have required minimum number of days, that our normal calendar had built-in time, right? So, we had more than enough time as it relates to what the state requires. Because of the school cancellations over the past couple of months, those days have dwindled down, and we're getting closer to the state requirement as it relates to minimum number of days. In most situations, from an hour standpoint, we're doing pretty good. The point of concern would be our seniors. So, as you can see from the chart, as it relates to excess hours. So, that is the number of hours that we have remaining before we would be under the minimum number of hours that the state requires. And you can see, from a kindergarten standpoint, we have 131 hours left. From first through fifth grade, we have 58 hours. Sixth grade has 97.18 hours. Seventh through eighth has 12.18 hours. From ninth through 12, we have 21 hours. But with our 12th graders, we have 2.1 hours. And the reason for that is that our 12th graders, they graduate, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, four or five days prior to the end of the school year, which, you know, causes us to have a reduced number of excess hours for them. So, we've been starting to think about, because unfortunately, as I jokingly started, I wish all of the winter was just combined in just the month of February. But being that we still have March, and we still have, unfortunately, in Minnesota, April remaining, there could potentially be a need to consider the safety of students and staff and potentially keep students home or do a late start or an early release. So, we've been looking at a number of options. You know, our first, our first option, so, and I'll ask that you all reach out to our legislators and really push to make sure that this moves forward. But the governor, our governor declared a couple of weeks ago that school districts would not have to make up those cold-weather days. I think it was like January 29th, 30th, and 31st. So, he kind of made this declaration, which is great. But we later learned that unfortunately, he does not have the authority to unilaterally make those decisions and that the legislature would have to approve any type of bill that was brought forth. We learned today that it seems like they must be getting a lot of pressure around this at the state level, and that we believe by the end of this week, we may know what the outcome of that potential legislation will be. So, that's our first hope. Because if we can get those three days back, I feel pretty confident that we wouldn't have to do any other sorts of manipulation to make sure that we meet the minimum number of instructional hours. Something else that we've considered, because this is directly really related to the high school, because they're so close, particularly 12th grade, is that currently, our high school, on Monday, Tuesday, and, I'm sorry, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday starts at 8:20, and on Tuesdays and Thursdays starts at 8:40. Another way that we could potentially gain some time back is if we adjusted the start time to 8:20 every day of the week from now into the end of the school year, which would allow us to build up more time, more instructional hours, and could potentially help us balance out the required number of hours. Now, one implication in doing that would be that we currently use those Tuesdays and Thursdays for collaboration time, so our high school staff would have to figure out a different way to collaborate for the remainder of the year. And we would do that so that we wouldn't have to have conversations about adding on a day at the end of the year. Or, you know, taking Good Friday and making that a school day. Or, you know, or having seniors come back the day after they graduate, right? So, we're exploring all of these options. Our first option would be that the governor, or particularly that the legislature, would approve whatever bill comes forward. And then, if that didn't go through, we would want to really look at, maybe looking at the start time change and building time back, because, you know, we don't believe, particularly, it's in the best interest of our school district to add a day at the end of the year. I would prefer not to, you know, add a day on Good Friday as people already have vacation plans. And I'm not sure what that would mean for attendance or for staff or students, for that matter, right? And I know a couple of years ago, we had seniors come back after they graduated. And based on the feedback I've gotten from staff who was here at the time, that was met with mixed success. I guess, I'm not sure how successful that was. So, that's what I have for you this evening. Once, I would request that the board allows me and Cabinet and Principals to, a little bit of time to the end of this week. I've looked at the forecast, and I think we may have our first full-five-day week in a long time. So, if we can make it through this week, I think, and we can get the outcome from the legislator, then we, legislation, I mean legislators, excuse me, then we can make a decision on what our next steps will be.
I just have to say this because I'm an optimist, although I appreciate your pragmatic view of our climate here in Minnesota. As our NPR weather people say, meteorological spring actually begins on Friday, everyone. Friday, March 1st. So, just, hope spring's eternal.
Yes.
Pun intended.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you for that. I did not know that, so I appreciate that.
If we, Estmas, if we do add a day back in, is your expectation that we do it across the board, K-12?
So, that's, you know, we've explored different options. You know, as we look at the state-required hours, there's potentially not a need for that. So, that's why, you know, we talked about hopefully, the governor's declaration will go through. Or, if not, I want to first start looking at what can we do with the high school? Maybe we can do some adjustment with the start time so that we didn't have to impact everybody. I would say another potential implication, which we really haven't gone into great detail about, is that our summer is pretty jam-packed with construction at Aquila. And we're banking on every single day, so adding a day only further delays the start of that project. So, I think we want to try to explore other options besides adding days.
And Aston, you may have thought of this, and if the legislature comes through, it may be a moot point. But I don't know what, if we have any professional development built into the rest of the school year. And hate to give that up, but it might be another option to consider.
Absolutely. We do have an early-release day that, you know, we could certainly, I think the challenge is, it's like, I think it turns out to be about an hour and a half or maybe two hours worth of time. But, you know, that may be the difference between, you know, needing to make up time or not. So, that's certainly something we would take into consideration as well.
I like Mary's optimism. I'm not going to bank on it.
I've only been a Minnesotan for 10 years, remember that.
All right. We're moving on to policy development, second reading policies five, and we'll take these one at a time. And let's just start with policy 550, Distribution of Announcements and Other Information. It's the second reading, go ahead.
Members of the board, at our last meeting, as it relates to policy 550, the board identified a couple of typos that we corrected. It was in two places of the policy, changing the word insure with an I to the word insure with an E. Those corrections were made. And again, that was the only, those were the only recommended changes at that time.
Any other questions or comments? Moving on to the second reading of policy 705, Investments.
Chair Gores, members of the board, at the last meeting, the board made a request or asked a question of our Director of Business Services, Patricia Magnuson, regarding the policy, just was it, wondering if the policy was appropriate. And what we heard from our Director of Business Services at that time is that it was a solid investment policy and that she would continue to look at, in the future, potentially enhancing that, but for now, felt that the policy was sufficient.
And then, next up, we have policy 707, Transportation of Public School Students. And I'll ask Superintendent Osai to address the various parts in this that are still read in.
Chair Gores, members of the board, policy 707, Transportation of Students. What you'll see is that the MSBA redline information that was there during the first reading is still located there. And this evening, I would like to make some recommendations connected to that redline information. So, if I can direct your attention in that policy to Section 4 Eligibility, specifically under Section B of that area where you see the parentheses language. It notes that in this section, school districts may wish to outline those discretionary areas where they intend to provide transportation. What I would ask or request or recommend at this time is that we remove this. I do believe that there will come a time, potentially, where we, as a district, should look at our current boundaries for transportation. I'm not recommending that at this time, we look at changing those. But just in the future, when that time comes, that we may want to come back and revisit and more clearly specify what those are. So, that's one area. Another area that I would like to bring your attention to and which I would recommend be removed from the policy is under Section 5, letter D, where it talks about the transportation of students who attends a high-needs English-language learner program. Currently, in St. Louis Park Public Schools, we do not have a high-needs English-language learner program. So, because of that, I would recommend that we remove that language from the policy as well. And then, under Section 6, which is titled, Transportation of Resident Students to Non-District Schools, you'll see that there's MSBA recommendation of number C. And essentially, it talks about transportation for any student attending school in an adjoining state. But this is under a reciprocity agreement, which we don't have. So, because we don't currently have a reciprocity agreement, I would recommend that we remove that language. Now, if, in the case, we ever get a reciprocity agreement, if with any state, hopefully not Iowa, but if we get one, I would recommend that we come back and revisit that language at that time. As we continue to work through the policy, you'll notice some additional language that I would recommend that we keep. So, in Section 7 of the policy, you'll see H was added. And this is just more specification around students with disabilities. And it gives parents just more information about what they can do in order to make sure that their students are getting appropriate transportation. And then, in Section 8, you'll see some language connected to homeless students. And I would recommend that the language is appropriate to keep. So, those are my recommendations connected to this policy.
Any other questions or comments? So, when the action agenda comes up, I recommend we make the motion with the recommendations, adopting the recommendations made by Superintendent Osai. So, just seeing where we're going to go at the end, okay? Next up is the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that anybody wants to pull off for discussion? Seeing no issues there. The following item for the school media is recommended for approval, and that would be the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Mary, is there a second? Seconded by Ann. Any, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie 70. Next is the action agenda. Approval of Middle School Media Center and Mechanical Upgrade Project Bid Awards, which includes the link in the seven classrooms. It is recommended that the school board approve the Middle School Media Center and Mechanical Upgrade Project Bid Awards as presented. Is there a motion? Moved by Ann, is there a second? Seconded by Karen. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie 70. Next up is approval of the three policies. Is there anyone who would like to have them considered separately? Okay, then I'll do a joint motion. Approval of, is there a motion to approve policy of second readings, policies 550, Distribution of Announcements and Other Information, policy 705 Investments, policy 707, Transportation of Public School Students as presented with Superintendent Osai's recommendations adopted? Is there a motion? Moved by Ann. Seconded by Joe. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carrie 70. All right, we're up to communications and transmittals. Hey, Jim.
One of my favorite events coming up soon at the high school. Tuesday, March 5th, is the high school pop concert, and I always enjoy that. They'll be at Tuesday, March 5th at 7 o'clock.
With a jazz band performance beforehand, and the opportunity to buy a pizza dinner.
And that was when? Tuesday, March 7? March 5th. All right, Ann? Or Ken?
I have two. So, there is, on March 8th, the Career Board is having a, kind of a workshop for the students. The students come into the school at around 8 o'clock into this classroom here, actually. And a bunch of us from the Career Opportunity Board and a bunch of us from the Career Opportunity Board do little mock interviews and tell them about things. So I'll be telling them about supply chain and project management. So it was a great thing that we did last year, and we're bringing it again this year, and it's a good opportunity for the kids to see and find out more, more specifics about opportunities for employment and/or school or education in a two-year or four-year programs. And then, my phone just went off, but on the 12th of March, there is the college, getting your workbook through your suitcase ready for college. You guys ever attend that? I did it last year. Wish I would have done it earlier, but what it does is, they do it here at the high school again in the auditorium, and they go through all the do's and don'ts for financing college, and, and it gets you prepared for that. Something everyone should, if you have kids, you should probably go to it earlier than later. Don't go in the senior or junior year. But you can, you'll still get a lot of great information, but if you can go while they're in junior high or something like that, it's an preference for what they need to know and what you need to know financially, then that's helpful.
I had the great pleasure of attending three sixth grade writing classes today. Our sixth graders are working on a project where they are writing an advocacy letter to the school board about something that they are passionate about. And so I went in and talked to them about what exactly the school board does, who we work for, lots, they had lots of great questions. They thought, a lot of them thought that we worked for the federal government, which was cool. And then we, and then we talked a lot about how to make a great case for an issue that you're passionate about. And one thing that I, that I thought of when, when our ID coordinators and our immersion coordinator were talking, is that one way that I asked them, you know, one way that I told them was a powerful way to make an argument was, make your case based on the things that we have already told you are important to us. So we have a mission statement, we have core values that we talk about. And not only that, but you have things on the wall of every classroom in this building that are values that we have said that are important to us. And when I kind of suggested, you know, where would, where would you find them? They all were able to sort of say, hey, we have these ID learner profiles all over the middle school, and, and these are, these are things that we know are important. So I, I expect and hope that we'll be getting some letters from some sixth graders. They have some, some things that they're very passionate about, school lunch, start times, block days, lots of things that they're interested in. So I hope that we will see them soon. And I would like to thank Gretchen Bailey for giving me that opportunity, and also the students of second, fifth, and seventh hour class. And I think Mary's going to be going to meet with them tomorrow, so have fun.
Thursday, March 7th, is the Children First Breakfast, the annual Children First Breakfast, and that is free to attend. I'm not sure if they're still taking reservations. Yeah, that's your reminder, everybody. I'll see you at 7 o'clock at the Doubletree. But your, all of us up here will be there, and I'm sure lots of members of the cabinet will be there as well, so come say hi, join us in our efforts to really demonstrate, live, recommit ourselves to the values of St. Louis Park, to put the children in this community first. See you for breakfast. I think it's 7 a.m., on the 7th, right? 7:30, 7? Thursday 7, okay.
This Thursday, February 28th, is Empty Bowls at Westwood Lutheran Church. It's a fundraiser, they step the local food shelf, will take donations, but mainly it's, it's just an awareness event for, for food insecurity, so they serve a modest meal, both for lunch and for dinner. Lunch is 11:30 to 1:30. Dinner is 5:00 to 7:30. There's all sorts of entertainment throughout the day, and you can purchase and see a variety of bowls that, that people have, have made. It's a very fun, fun event. Hope to see you.
You can see if the, if the camera guy can get this in, oh, there. It's a lovely plaque that the district is giving each of the school board, honoring our work here, and it's, it's an upgrade from prior year, so thank you very much, Aston. And Julia, thank you very much.